So I'm Emily Wolfco and I'm calling together the meeting of the Town of Deerfield Planning Board on Monday, June 6th, 2022. Kathy, could you read our introduction?
Sure. This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with the Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 Act, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Including an Extension of the Remote Participation Provisions of his March 2020 Executive Order, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting, hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of in-person attendance, the Town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices with remote participation details noted below.
Thank you. Thank you. As usual, and primarily for those of us here in person that we have our meeting guidelines to speak one at a time, following our Deerfield Code of Conduct, to be respectful, considerate, and courteous, as well as concise, non-repetitive, and recognized by the Chair. So I will identify board members and attendants. Kathy?
Kathy Sylvester here.
And Anne Mary?
Anne Mary Cludier here.
Denise?
Denise Mason here.
Andrea Leibson here.
Kathy Wetruba here.
And Emily Wolfco here. So we have our full complement of... Oh, and Rachel. Rachel has not yet come. Okay. So reviewing the minutes, I have had some conversations with Rachel and also with Jen in particular, or Casey. We are behind on our minutes. We have minutes from May 9th, 19th, and the 25th, and I think those were not totally distributed. Any of them were distributed to you, were they? No, I don't believe so. I know that Rachel has been working hard to try to have those minutes be as comprehensive as possible, especially in relation to our public hearing, so I appreciate that. But there's actually two rather conflicting statements in the Massachusetts Bylaws, Statute 1 that states minutes need to be done in a timely manner, which is considered within the next three public body hearings or 30 days, whichever is later. But then I understand from Casey that our town council has stated that potentially maybe there with case law or potentially some other rulings by the courts that the standard has become a little bit more condensed with minutes being, draft minutes being available within 10 days and minutes approved monthly. So Casey has mentioned that she is going to try to create a guideline for all of the boards in Deerfield to follow these 10 days or monthly guidelines. So Rachel will be working to, by our next meeting, have our minutes from the 9th, 19th, 25th, and this evening. Yes, yes.
I was the clerk for a long time, and it's a huge job. It's like hours and hours and hours. And I'm sure, 100%, I'm sure that Rachel is doing her best, but I think it speaks to like, we really need to rotate this job, like even if it's yearly. Like I did it for a few years in a row, and it's draining. So if we could, I know that tonight is a night that we're going to be talking about switching up roles and stuff. So if we could figure out a way to do that, so it's shared more equitably, you know.
Right. That might be something too. I'm not sure how many people on the Planning Board realize that Sue Brilat, who has been our administrative assistant for the Planning Board, is moving on to something else. And so we don't really, at this point, have a Plan B.
Right.
When, because at one point even there was a question, would the assistant do the minutes? And then the clerk would edit and...
It happens all the time, actually. Like since I've been on the board, they're always, and I don't mean to say they. It has been said repeatedly that, well, someone else, you know, as soon as we get administratively, you know, our ducks in a row, but unfortunately that hasn't, the stars haven't lined up for us. So it puts a lot of pressure on, you know, us board members.
Yes. Andrea?
And I was going to say that I had strongly encouraged that we have someone who is not serving on the board, prepare the minutes and have the clerk review them. Because I have served as a secretary clerk on other boards and find you can't fully participate if you are busy writing notes to, you know. So it would be my preference that we would...
I mean, we can continue with this discussion even right now because it's right, pretty close on our agenda anyway. This is good.
Well, and that's the thing. If you want to participate, you end up participating and then watching the whole meeting again later to use the notes. It's a lot for a volunteer position.
Right. The Massachusetts guidelines state that the minutes need to be comprehensive enough so that if someone had not attended the meeting, they would understand what had gone on. And I think there's varying degrees of detail with that. I think for our public hearings, they've been quite a bit more comprehensive. I don't think they have to be quite as comprehensive tonight. I mean, like right now, discussion on best ways of managing meeting minutes. Yes, Denise?
I was gonna say, I think that's a continued conversation. It might be good to talk with Casey or whomever, you know, is involved in hiring the new person and make that part of their job, and also the training, and possibly have a template so that, you know, a simple template. I know that, I know Anne Mary, and I'm sure others have used, I know Lili does that with our CCI meetings, just uses the agenda and then just bumps it down and does that. So I think we could, you know, have that conversation with Casey to make it. And I agree with Andrea. I cannot fully, be fully engaged in the meeting and take minutes. So.
So where are we with this? I mean, right now, I think that the, first of all, I do know that there's a big push to try to replace who as soon as possible, but also a job, a new job description is going through the Personnel Board. That's next Monday night. And then there's recruitment and notice and hiring and orientation. So maybe several months before we have someone.
Right.
So, I mean, it still may be a work in progress, but to my, to my knowledge, Rachel was, well, maybe that goes on to the next part of our agenda. So maybe let's keep this in mind as we scoot into that agenda in terms of backup. I don't know that I have a backup in my mind. So, new business, Chris Curtis Contract Renewal. Actually, when we put this on the agenda, or when I put it on the agenda, it was a slightly different. It's been morphed a little bit. Chris's contract, Chris, first of all, is working with us right now on our accessory apartment bylaws. And he, his current contract continues through June 30th. So there was a question of whether or not we could, or should, tonight renew his contract for starting in July 1st. What, with some conversations with Brenda, the accountant, as well as Casey, what we've also, and Chris, determined is that Chris does have some, he has 16, 17 hours left on his current contract, does not anticipate using it between, all of it between now and June 10th. So Brenda is looking at rolling, I think the word is encumbering, those hours over to the next fiscal year, the 10 hours, 10, he thinks he might use five or six of them now, and then roll the additional leftover hours, if you will, over to the next fiscal year so we could use them. And then depending on where we are with our accessory apartment bylaw, we may want to speculate more specifically how much we might need to have him help us finish the accessory apartment bylaws. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, I think that makes total sense. And by the way, I mean, I was talking, what Casey did mention that there is, over the course of the last 10 years, there's been a bill that's been floating around at the state level, and it's called H5250. It's 40R, and it's zoning, zoning for housing.
Right.
And, you know, the thing is, is that the state supersedes the town. So if they decide all of a sudden they want to change things, then whatever we do is going to basically be a waste of time. I hate to say that, but, so, you know, I think, I think the way you're proceeding sounds really good. And I would suggest that waiting until the end of the session, which is July 31st, to see where, to see what they've done.
Right. Chris is already on checking that out with the ID bylaw.
And if not, then we can decide how to do it.
Right, right. Good. So here we are, back to what we were just talking about earlier. I don't believe, I don't believe we need any official action from the accountant or anything to continue to roll Chris's 6 or 10 hours over into the following year. I don't think that needs any particular vote or anything. So we have several Planning Board offices and then Planning Board appointments. Maybe I'll start with, although with something easiest. I think Andrea, you mentioned that you were appointed by the...
Town Moderator.
Town Moderator for Open Space, and you were, oh, I have you down as being appointed by the Planning Board, but it's not. It's by the Town Moderator, right? And you were going to contact him?
I did, and he was happy to have me do that. I have to be sworn in again. So that is, that is the one part that is missing from Open Space right now.
So if Rachel is going to be listening to these minutes, this Zoom, the first thing is that, in terms of our reappointments, that Andrea, you have been reappointed by the moderator, but you will be sworn in for your next term, which will be 520, or 622 to 523, right?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. I don't think there's anything else by the moderator, is there? Does anybody else know of anything that they had been appointed to by the moderator? No? Okay. I have been appointed by the Planning Board to the Franklin Regional Planning Board, and I did, I mean, I'd been appointed by the Select Board. I asked them to appoint me, and to be honest, I don't know if that happened or not. So I imagine it did. Yeah, right. Okay. So, and I will say that I've heard, thank you for those of you who got back to me about what you were interested in, in terms of your current positions, as well as anything future. And, and also, we do have a model that seems to be happening right now with individuals picking up when they can for smaller chunks of time, just like Andrea for fees, and Kathy. Kathy is now our Chair for the Accessory Apartment Work Group. So really appreciate that. And those, the rest of us who aren't stepping up at that point, we will try to support, support you as we can. So we have, maybe as one slate, we have all of the ones that are appointed by the, I mean, if we want to have it as a slate, planning, the, appointed by the Planning Board, there's Anne Mary Cludier for Franklin Regional Planning Board, Denise for CIPC, myself for CP. I'm not on CPC. You are.
I'm CIPC.
CPC, CPC is...
Oh, God. Preservation, Conservation.
CPA?
Oh, CCI, no. CPC, first of all, what's CPC? Capital Planning Committee. I'm not on that.
No, it's not Capital Planning.
Community Preservation CPA.
Oh, Community Preservation Committee that does CPA stuff. I am on that.
You are.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Denise CCI, myself CCI. I'm also on MVP, which may now be being called Open, or Green Development. Andrea on the Open Space Committee, as we just, well, just said, and then myself on Senior Housing. Are there any requests for, or maybe I'll have a motion for that, and then we can have some discussion? Motion to reappoint people as noted to these various boards and committees?
I so move.
I second.
Okay. And discussion, I guess to begin with, is there anybody who says, wants to fight me for CPCs?
I'm sorry, and Andrew, could you remind what committee?
I do FERC, FERC. Thank you.
I don't have you here for that.
Yeah.
Well, I have Franklin Regional Planning, FR, Franklin Regional Planning Board, but not on FERC. You go, you've got a FERC meetings that are different. Okay. Then in the meantime, I did check with Denise, who is gracefully agreed to serve as another term as Vice Chair. I...
Unless someone else wants to do it, I'm happy to continue.
We're happy to have you.
It was quick.
You're a good team, right?
Oh, good. Okay. Yes, yes, yes. All right. So back then to our non-Planning Board offices. We did have a motion to approve that slate of appointments. And second, are there any other, is there any other discussion on that? All right. So let's vote on that slate. Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
We'll just go around, starting with you and Mary.
Anne Mary Cludier, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy Wetruba, yes.
And Emily Wolfco, yes. So unanimously reappointed. And then I did not hear otherwise from Rachel, so I think she is interested in continuing as clerk. Denise has mentioned that unless someone else wants to step up, she's willing to continue as Vice Chair, and same for myself. So maybe if we can have a motion for those three, and then we can have some secondhand discussion. This would be for Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk.
I feel a little bad doing this to Rachel without her being here.
We could certainly hold. Well, let's see, should we have that in discuss, oh, yeah. Well, then, do you want to make a motion separate?
I do want to make a motion that we separate out that responsibility and discuss it when everybody's here. Is that...
Second?
Second.
I'm seeing a lot of people nodding that that makes sense.
I don't want to volunteer for her.
No, no.
Right.
So I'm not quite sure what are...
So I move that we take the clerk position from the slate of candidates that we're approving tonight and move it to the next regular meeting of the Planning Board.
Second?
Second. Yes.
Discussion?
That's sensible.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Anne Mary Cludier, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy Wetruba, yes.
And Emily Wolfco, yes. So the motion passes, and I think that makes a lot of sense. So if we could have a motion on the Chair and Vice Chair?
I move that Ann Lee Wolfco serve as President of the Board, or Chair, Chair? Make it from Chair, and that Denise Mason serve as Vice Chair to the Board, Planning Board.
I second.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
No. But can I remind people to state when they're saying something, state their names so whoever listens to it, they'll know who said what.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You want to be clerk too? All right. So we'll call the question. Kathy?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Anne Mary Cludier, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy Wetruba, yes.
And Emily Wolfco, yes. So congratulations to us. All right. Thank you. Moving forward, for old business, Andrea, we're on Planning Board Initiatives.
Yes. I sent some materials to Planning Board members, both a little table that had Planning Board fee comparison, the figures that we approved at our May 9th meeting, and the figures that had been that standard before that. And the, this information also needs to be entered into the Regulations Governing Fees and Fee Schedules for the Planning Board. The last version had been revised August 17th, 2015. And so I wanted to discuss especially the document of the regulations because we did not discuss that at our last meeting. And turned out, it wasn't as straightforward as one would think, where we could just plug in the numbers. So these two documents will be subject to the public hearing, which will take place on July 11th. And so we are just having a discussion now about them so that we'll be prepared for the July 11th public hearing.
And we might, I believe we might need to vote on that as a date later on. So at the end of this, don't let us forget that, on July 11th.
Yes. Yes, exactly. So I hope you have this copy. I tried to make the changes in red so that they would be easier to see. My version didn't always have the color, so I apologize. I don't believe that there are any changes in Section 1, which is the introduction, excuse me. Apparently there is, yes.
Let's see, 1, 1, the first sentence, actually, "The Planning Board has adopted regulations, this is like those small governing fees and a new schedule of fees for various types of applications for review conducted by," I don't know, it just seems, that just... redundant? Is that redundant?
I decided that some of this may be legal ease or historically, historically present, and maybe let's not bust with that. Okay, that was my approach.
Move on.
I did, so under purpose, by the way, under 1.2 purpose, I did look up General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G, so I would know what it said. And it allows the imposition of reasonable fees, especially for consultants, for boards. And so we are doing this according to what the state has said we should do. In Section 2, I believe there were, there should be no changes. I'll correct me if I am wrong. Section 3, the Administrative Fees, in 3.1, applicability, and 3.2, submittal, I did not see any reason to change anything. Under Section 3.3, Site Plan Review, we had agreed on May 9th that we would change the fee to be $250, and, and that would be it. We would not say anything about square footage. B, modification or extension of a site plan review shall also require the same fee, noted above.
Yeah, no.
Section, Part C says that special permit review is a $250 fee, and we removed square footage things. Section D, I believe is misworded because it says the exact same thing as B. And I believe it had, instead of, it says modification or extension of site plan shall also require fee specified above. I think the correct wording is modification or extension of special permit, which was indicated in C, shall also require fee. Does that make sense to everyone? Because...
Yep.
Okay, good. So it should be special permits. Thank you. E, approval not required, did not change. F, Preliminary Subdivision Plan, that was $200, changed to $200, plus all of these costs for consultants, yes.
So isn't that the case for everything, that if we have a consultant for any of these, and we talk about that later on, so I don't think we need to say that here, do we? I mean, since, since later on, we say, I forget what section, we say that we might be imposing.
In 4, in Section 4.
Right.
Yes.
I don't know that we need to say it.
I like less ambiguity, though.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay. So should we have that then in each one of them? You know, because we, for the others too?
I think we risk, if we don't have a consistency through the whole document, then why here, not here, why here, not here? I think that's a risk.
That was what we learned last week.
Yes.
Yes. So one question is, should that, should this, this...
Plus.
Should the, from plus on, be added to 3.3, the beginning?
Yeah.
Maybe it should all go up there?
That's...
That makes more sense.
Sure. For the following, something to that effect.
Okay. I will move this up to here. Okay. G, Definitive Subdivision Plan, it's $500 per proposed lot, plus $100 per lot. And I failed to include modification to definitive subdivision, which would be letter H. So I apologize. That will end up in the final version. Okay?
That makes sense. And that was modification, right?
Yes. In Section 3.4, I didn't see any changes, nor 3.5, nor 3.6.
I'm sorry, for the modification, I forgot, I couldn't quite see from my notes. What did we agree on for modification?
$250. Okay. Moving on to Project Review Fees, the applicability. So I wonder if it should be called Project Consultant Review Fees because this is all about the hiring of consultants to help us. And I, if it's, if it's explicit that review is being done by a consultant, then it's fine. Otherwise, I thought it might be helpful to have that word there.
Yeah.
And I didn't think there needed to be changes to 4.1, applicability, 4.2, submittal, 4.3, I again stuck in the word consultant, but if it's there at the beginning, you probably don't need it. And all of these, the dollar amounts have to do with how much you expect consultants to charge. And it's to have the money set aside, deposited by, you know, paid by the applicant, deposited into a special escrow account. It's 53G account. That's where the money goes. So for example, if when we were doing the park and we wanted to have a peer review, and it were not a park done by the town, but by some private entity, we would say, you need to put, we are going to hire a consultant to review things. Here's how much money needs to go into this account based on what is being done.
But I have a question then. Do we know how valid these amounts might be now? Could we, maybe one of the things we as a board might consider is if Andrea talks with Jen or Casey or whomever, and, and realizes that some of these consultant fees may need to be increased, that we give them the discretion to go ahead and increase accordingly for what would be discussed at our public hearing? Does that make sense?
So you would suggest Casey?
I don't know if it's Casey.
Or would Brenda be the right person? I don't, I know.
Yeah, might be Brenda. I, after, after July 1st. Just because she's crazy.
Okay. Okay. But, but...
Right. Oh, yeah.
That is, yes, about the dollar amounts. Okay. Also, the, there's a... uh, there's a, an interest rate that comes later and like, why is that?
Right.
So I don't know, okay. Okay, so the, so that, it, I think we're, are we in agreement that that's okay? All the other text is okay, based on that. I will, I will consult with the powers that be to figure out if the dollar amounts seem reasonable.
So these consultant fees are fixed.
Well, the, I think that they are payments made that, that the planning board will have to pay the consultants out of. What, there is, their replenishment is certainly considered, so it's not just, it's going to be eight hundred dollars and that's all. It's where we want to have eight hundred dollars on hand to be able to pay a consultant. If the, if, when the amount comes down to six hundred dollars, but six hundred dollars is, is spent and we only have twenty-five percent left or two hundred dollars left, we will then go to the applicant and say.
So should we state in there that these fees are variable? Or be, because if we, like, we could box ourselves in a little bit here. If, if we're, if we're not saying they're fixed and there's they're variable, right? They, they may change depending on the consultant's, its purpose. Should we state somewhere that there's a, a variable? A variable amount per consultation?
Yeah, looking at four point one applic- applicability. The planning board shall impose a project review fee on those applications which require in the judgment of the planning board outside, a review by outside consultants. In hiring outside consultants, the board may engage engineers, planners, lawyers. Such assistance may include but shall not be limited to analyzing, et cetera. Doesn't say anything about what the fees will cost and, and what we, and thus section fifty-three G, the law from the state set allows imposition of reasonable fees for consultants.
So should it say variable project review fee? I mean, I, I'm just, this is what we've learned. Language matters, clarity matters. And if it's not fixed by the figures that we have in our document, if we can say to a reasonable measure, the project review fee, there will be a variable review fee? I don't know, I'm a little concerned about just solidifying us and the dollar amount. I mean, if, if that's what we're gonna go by, then that's what we have to go by.
I don't like the word ver- variable because it because it could mean that, well, on your project, it's going to cost this, and on your project, it's going to cost something else for the exact same thing. That's, that, that wouldn't be appropriate.
I think it's more about the engineer, the planner.
It's dependent on, on the consultant.
Correct.
Exactly.
And Mary?
I, I, I wanna think about it a different way, that it's maybe based on the town, like if we could figure out what Greenfield and Amherst and what, whomever pays on this schedule and we can offer something competitive, then we are deciding what we will pay and instead of them deciding what they'll charge us.
So.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Boy, I think that's, if you, so that's, all right, if you get a brand new lawyer out of law school, you pay a hundred dollars an hour. If you've got a lawyer who really knows what the heck's going on, you're paying three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Do you say, oh, we need to do this more inexpensively, so we're gonna use the hundred dollar lawyer? I, I don't think that makes, that, that makes sense. It depends on the expertise
Correct.
of the consultant.
But I think, I agree with that. I definitely want that lawyer instead of that lawyer. But I think that we also don't want the other side of it to be, well, Greenfield pays twenty-five hundred and Deerfield pays, you know, thirty-five hundred, so we're gonna work for Deerfield because they, we, we can charge them a thousand dollars more.
Our tension is wanting to give our applicants a reasonable understanding of what they might be charged. This is not wanting to be hedged in.
Right, right. And the, and the point of, of the fees is to cover the costs. It is never to make money.
Right.
Right.
Maybe we should state that.
Well, I think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
Denise next?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, so how old this document is from twenty fifteen? Okay, and who decided on these fees back then? So I mean, I, I, I think we're gonna have a hard time really deciding this tonight, and I'd like to check with people who are here then. I mean, Rachel might have an idea or, you know, Casey possibly, so.
Oregon, I wonder, is this too loose if who, if what we say is that Andrea researches this and comes up with something that is highly recommended by Casey, Brenda, whomever, and puts that forward as a proposal for discussion at our public hearing, that in the meantime then becomes something that the public can discuss, but also then if we have any other modifications, we can have that during our discussion period at the public hearing. I mean, otherwise, we have the, we could have the public hearing in August.
So, so we're looking at, do we continue with the document as is with a fixed fee? Or do we look at?
Again, the fee, the fee is not, this is the initial deposited money.
Okay.
Paid into this G, this general fifty-three G, section fifty-three G law that allows us to have consultants and pay them reasonable amounts. It, it's not, we're not saying we're going to only pay eight hundred dollars at the most for a project that, that disturbed six hundred square feet of land. We are saying that if you're going to disturb about six hundred feet of, six hundred square feet of land, we want to have a deposit on hand of eight hundred dollars in order to pay our consultants.
Oh, could we call it initial deposit instead of fee?
There you go. Yeah, that might do it.
Give me the sentence, please, Kathy.
Well, I'm just saying, instead of the word fee where it says, you know, project size for proposals, blah, 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 eight hundred dollars and, and so on, say initial deposit or initial fee to imply that this isn't the end of the road necessarily.
Again, it's that wording thing. The state law uses the word B.
Okay.
So I would be hesitant to change.
Initial deposit of.
So, so what, at what point during the process do we determine whether they need more? So that should be written so that it's not, you know, you've got the initial eight hundred dollars and then what? So someone has to be reviewing what's happening.
Keep reading.
Okay.
Keep reading.
Replenishment.
Yes, replenishment, inspection phase, handling of project review fees. This is, uh, these are sections four point four, four point five, four, four point six.
Right.
And we, um, there's also re- refunding excess fees if you have a fifty-one, three G account into which have been deposited these fees and all of the money is not needed to pay a consultant. The money is returned to the applicant. So it, again, it's not a moneymaker, it's just a way of holding money so that the planning board can pay consultants.
Okay, so I have another question. So, so, so that sounds good, that's fine. So, you know, we can have this, this obviously needs to be written into the contract that we have and then someone needs to enforce it.
Right.
Okay, I mean, this is great to have it written down, but if we don't know at what point we may need and another opinion or an extended opinion, and who determines that? It's the building inspector or hiring?
Well, these are planning board fees. So if the if we have a site plan review and we decide we need a consultant.
Right.
Then the planning board decides that it wants these extra fees. And the fee, no work is supposed to be taken on until the, until the fees have been paid. There, um, there is discussion in this document about where, you know, the money goes into these fifty-three G account and the town accountant, town treasurer, we, we have to let the, the town treasurer know that, that the monies have been deposited. And then the town treasurer is required to send us monthly information about, about bills that have been paid out of this account or if we reserve, uh, if we receive.
Who's the depositor?
The applicant.
Okay. And they deposit into an account that is set up through the planning board or the town?
The fifty-three G.
Okay, so I think that the town accountant
Yes.
creates this account.
Okay.
And in fact, there may be a standard fifty-three G account for town. But that different, different projects, different projects funnel money into it. And the town, either accountant or clerk, I have to see, is the person, is the person who keeps track and is supposed to inform the planning board of how the money has been spent.
So this is interesting, kind of as a devil's advocate, if, if we're saying, okay, the consultant really needs to do another phase and we need to go further, you applicant need to give us more money. And they say, sorry.
Then we would.
Application is over.
Correct. So, so it, I'm in, um, section five, delinquent accounts, for example. Five point three says all applicants owing fees to the planning board at the time of any amendment to these provisions shall be sent the following. So they get told that they're late. They get, or have a grace period and then the work stops.
Well, doesn't, no, doesn't this have to do with whether we change these, these regulations, not necessarily whether we change the amount of consultant fees? There's five point three, all applicants owing these, at, at the time of any amendment to these provisions of the regulation. So I think it has to do with, you know, if somebody right now had any fees in process, we would have to follow these provisions. But it doesn't have to do with whether or not during their application things change.
I think people need to, the applicant needs to be aware of this.
Right, right.
It's basically like a change order.
Right.
Could it just start by saying initial deposited fee schedule, so they understand there could be some fluctuation or variation? Because at the end, it wrapped it up pretty nicely. I don't know. I, I, I like the term initial. I think it does give a sense of.
So you're suggesting in section four, project consultant
Yes.
review fees, where, and where were the word?
I don't know.
Right, right.
Maybe just the title to all the fees right before. I mean, what I am.
Schedule of the initial project review.
Initial deposited fee schedule, right before all the fees come. Because it, it, it does indicate it is an initial amount, it may be the final amount, it just, we don't necessarily know that. So rather than coming back to somebody and saying, guess what, eh, wasn't enough, they'll have a sense that this is probably right, but it could change.
Yeah, as much as we want to have a public hearing in July, I wonder if there's enough questions here. But in fact, we should have continued discussion on this in, this in July and then have our public hearing in August.
Given that Casey may be gone and Jen is gone and, you know, on vacation.
Yeah, I feel like they have information we need.
Yes, I would agree. Yeah, yeah. And I mean, Deandrea, have you spoken to Brenda?
No.
Oh, okay, yeah, that, that would be good, probably, to see how many times this has actually come up.
Yes.
Sure.
Well, and we did get pooched, the town did get pooched on some fees that they didn't collect from somebody, so, you know. So thank you.
This is important.
Okay. Okay, um, so, yeah, so, and the other question of, so we will, I will take this to be reviewed by, by Brenda. I'll start with her, uh, is also this, this question in section five point one. A very specific interest rate.
Oh, yeah.
And where did that come from?
So that's something for her too. I think, yeah, that's five point, back on four point six number two, E two. It talks about, um, that the applicant can look at, can see how much of their money has been used up. So E two B, a report of all checks authorized for issuance since, really since the last statement. I mean, it's really since the last request. Right here.
I know, which, I'm sorry. Before E, what, what are the numbers?
Here, so here we go, where's four six?
Four six, okay, thank you.
A, B, C, D, E.
Yes.
Then there's two A, B.
Gotcha.
And I'm just wondering.
Can we make that a little larger?
Sure.
Thank you. They're sort of ornamental at this point. Beautiful.
I'm just wondering if a report of all checks authorized for issuance, if they want to see since the last, it's really since the last time they requested. The, this is, the applicant can ask to see all the checks that we've written from their escrow account, basically. And it wouldn't necessarily be from the last statement, because maybe we've written a bunch.
Right, the latest statement.
I'm thinking instead of since the last.
Okay, so the, an accounting, I'm going back to capital letter E, so this is four point six E. An accounting of an applicant's funds held in the fifty-three G account may be requested by the applicant at any time. And the accounting will include so the la- the latest bank statement, which would include all kinds of information. And they're just saying to have the most up-to-date bank statement. And so but I think, yeah.
Okay. Well, the, the bank statement, if the statement closes on the thirtieth and four checks came out on the second and the third, they may not have.
Right, but you have to have some, yeah.
Like an endpoint.
An endpoint. Yeah, so I
So they may.
I don't, I think that's, yeah. Again, I think we're picking at straws. So I will talk to Brenda about these specific fee, the specific dollar amounts and about the interest rate for past due fees, which we hope we will not have. And, and based on that, I will let you know what I find. And so perhaps June, July eleventh is too early for
Yeah.
the public hearing.
I have a question. So, okay, if, when these fees are imposed, how does the app, the applicant is filling out the application? Is any of this in the current application? So I mean.
Do we have an application form?
No, I mean, I don't have anything. But, you know, it should be in writing on the application instead of just verbally saying, hey, by the way, there are fees.
Oh, you know, I think that's.
I, you know, I don't know whether.
We just read, we just redid them, right?
Well, actually, that's, I will talk about that in a minute with the planner, that we're looking at updating all of our applications.
But I think that it probably is covered in that pre-meeting that Jen has with applicants. I think that's part of it. I mean, I don't know if it's.
Again, is it, is it in writing or is that just verbally conveyed? I like to see things in writing when it comes to, yeah.
So I'm gonna see really quickly if I can find.
Well. While you're doing that, thank you very much, Andrea.
Yes, thank you.
So let's, here's an application. I'm looking at an application for approval for preliminary plan of a subdivision. Oh, it's only one page. Okay, that is not a good example. Let's try to find another one.
Well, no, but I mean, we're talking about subdivision. So, oh, here, Alex has something. Oh, this, our, our fee schedule is in the packet.
Yes, and does it say?
Well, it's the old one.
Right.
Actually, this is interesting. This is the one from 2008, not even the approved one from 2015.
Thank you. When I started this, all I saw was the 2008 version.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, isn't that funny?
Yeah, I think this, this needs a little more investigation aside from tonight.
Yes. Okay, so Andrea, who has been very up to snuff with trying to notify Jen Wallace about the double announcements in the newspaper before the public hearing and then what needs to be posted and whatnot, will now say, scratch all that. And that we will have this on our agenda for next week, our next, our July 11th meeting. We will continue discussions here with the hopes that we can have a public hearing in August. So, everybody, okay, okey dokey. That was good. I'm glad we don't have any applicants. Do something with this. Kathy Sylvester, who is now our chair, thank you very much Kathy, of our accessory apartment. First of all, is there anything else, Andrea? Are you all set?
I just wanted to point out that I, I did find a form for site plan review application. And it does say on, on page. On the third, on page eight, I believe, consultant peer review requested by planning board, yes or no? Date plans to reviewer, date project specific account established. That would be the 53, that's our 53G account. Consultant fee paid, funds deposited into account, additional funds deposited, unused funds returned. So these things are included on the form that applicants will see.
That's not the one.
That's, no, in fact, that's for office use only. That's for what happens here in town hall. It is very complicated.
Simplification. That's good. Cool. All right. Thank you very much, Andrea. That's it. Thank you. The beat goes on. Wow. All right, Kathy, accessory apartment work group.
Yeah, so we had our first meeting in the, I don't know if you know, everybody knows who's on the committee. So Annalee thankfully was there and she was kind of the shadow chair, I'll call her. She helped me a lot. And Jim Cambius was there from finance committee, Bob Decker from ZBA. Carolyn Ness, as you know, select board, Patty Parag is a resident. Rachel was not in attendance, but she's on the committee. Chris Curtis wasn't able to make it and Bob Walden were not able to make it. But basically, you know, I told them our purpose was to try to get information from the different boards and members in the community to bring what their concerns and ideas might be on this accessory apartment bylaw draft to see what might need to change and, and give us some ideas to bring back to the planning board to see if we want to tweak this a little bit. We talked about history of ADUs in Deerfield, why we want to change it. One is residents that have expressed interest in having it changed and be not so narrow in scope. And we talked about some of the advantages that might be increasing housing inventory, increased flexibility for homeowners, might increase property tax assessment, therefore increase revenues and might increase workforce housing, housing for people that live in, or that work in Deerfield. There were some questions, some considerations that came up. If people on a septic wanted to add an accessory dwelling, how does that impact the septic? They might, they would definitely need to do some kind of upgrade and that could put a burden on the board of health. If we had a lot of requests, say in one year, how, how does it impact school enrollment? Should we allow ADUs for properties on sewer by right or special permit? How do you track ADUs when the house or the home is sold? There was parking concerns, increasing the number of parking spaces from one to two, because in currently in the draft bylaws, it says to increase parking spaces by one. And we had generally agreed upon that an attached ADU would be by right and detached would be by special permit. There's a in the definitions, it talks about it, the ADU would be not larger in floor area than half the floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And we decided to change that because if your primary house was 1,200 square feet, then an AD, you know, an accessory apartment of 600 square feet would not meet most people's needs. So we just.
Exactly what happened in Greenfield. As soon as they passed it, somebody took half their house and made it into an ADU.
How do you, how do you mean?
Like as soon as they passed their ADU.
Yep.
Bylaw, someone, there was a person who was waiting for it to pass and they quickly converted half, the maximum amount of their space that they could, including an addition and made it a Johnny ADU, which then they moved into and rented out the other part of the house.
Okay.
I guess we want to, the lesson that I took away from that is that maybe not so big a percentage. Like, I mean, what do we really want to see in like making that accurate?
Well, the current draft says whichever is smaller, 900 square feet or half, we decided to just make it 900 square feet maximum and not worry about half the square footage of the primary house because it could be quite small in that case, right? And we, another change is that it could be owner occupied in either unit. So the primary residence or the accessory dwelling could be occupied by the, the owner. So anyway, we, we are still working. We have another meeting on June 28th. And hopefully the different members will bring back information from their boards and we can talk about it further. And Annalee and I met with Chris Curtis about some of the concerns. He's tweaking the, the language to see if we can incorporate some of these concerns. And we'll get back to you when we have more information.
But I'll also add as, as Kathy was very good in, in sort of introducing to the committee. But we'll also remind everyone on the planning board that this is essentially an advisory work group. We weren't looking at them to be micro editing the, the draft bylaws that from the working group Kathy and the group will be submitting suggestions that then the planning board will address.
Right.
And Andrea, do you have another?
Oh, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Kathy, yes. Are there any other questions that have sort of popped up for planning board people that Kathy might want to take back to the committee?
I don't have any questions. I've got a few comments.
Okay, sure.
No, the comment, when you say make affordable rental housing units available, that, you know, I'm.
You're talking about the purpose.
Really not sure whether, I mean, what do you, what, what is affordable? You know, a lot of units around, you know, they're charging 1,200, $1,400. And if someone's going to be putting the money into making an accessory dwelling, I'm sure they're going to be charging more than, you know, $600, $700. You know, you've got to get your return on investment when you do these things. I, you know, it's making affordable, I think is questionable. I mean, I think, you know, some people who have, who have greater means may be able to do that and they're doing it for a family member and that's great, the family member's moving in, they're paying for that. But I think it's going to be a stretch for a lot of people to do that and not charge market, market rate. Another thing is, you know, considering, I mean, I'm on septic and it, if for us to be able to do something like that, we would have to probably redo our septic.
Right.
At least $30,000 and then have an affordable. So I, I think it's, I think it's going to be few, be few and far between the amount of people who actually do this. And I think anybody who does will probably be on, on the town sewer.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think we talked that this is not primarily to address affordable housing. It, it helps people stay in their home, maybe as they age, may give them a little bit more income if they don't have to like build another unit, but they might just have to modify their home. So they may not have to spend a lot of money and get something from it, either a little income or just somebody there to help them. But just less restrictive than what we have now. And some people in town have asked for this. And yeah, if they want to build something for $300,000 because they got to do their septic over, I mean, that's their business, right? Because as some people were, you know, saying they didn't want this. But I, I'm like, you know, I could put up a three car garage right next to your property within the setback and it could be a five car garage, if I can get that through the planning board. And it's as ugly as hell and you're, you know, so what? You're going to have to live with it because it's my property. So I think that, you know, we can pick some, some, not, not this committee, but others can pick arguments with, you know, we don't want ADUs. But you really can't totally control what people put on their property now.
Right, and we want to give, I'm sorry, Amy, we also want to give people who already have those units in their homes a way to have them legally. You know, and that might be a means of providing affordable housing when it's not a new project.
Right. You have to address the bigger issue of affordable housing units. So we don't get an unfriendly 40B, but that's another issue for another time. That's not going to be this bylaw.
It was interesting. It might be that the people who are on the work group were sort of handpicked or hand volunteered. But in general, there really was support for the accessory apartment bylaw revisions and moving forward. So that was good to hear.
I, I have a question. This is, this is Andrea and I'm sure you'll be surprised here. I'm going to ask you about fees. In, in 3941, you say that there'll be a non-refundable fee should be included with the application. Do we want to say what that fee is it, you know, do we need to include it in our schedule of administrative fees?
Good question.
Oh, well, it's, it's a special permit fee.
It would be a special permit fee?
Oh, that's true.
It looks like an approval of a special permit, kind of a special permit for an accessory apartment shall be the same as prescribed in section 5300. So that must be our special permit section. Is it? Anybody have their?
I, I have one here.
I think, do you know that Alex's 5300 special permits? Yeah, okay, so it's special permit. Oops, okay. Yes.
Why, why are we giving away that permitting? I'm just playing. Why would it be a special permit? Why can't we do the permitting body?
No, we're not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get confused. I get confused with all the different catchphrases.
Know where you're going.
I have a question.
Do you think that's clear though? I mean, that it doesn't seem like it's a special permit for accessory apartments. Maybe if we don't, if we don't capitalize accessory apartment there.
Or, or, or if in 3941, it says a non-refundable special permit fee.
Right. That's good.
Our special permit review fee, because now it's called special permit review.
Okay, cool. Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah, Kathy's got that there. Yes, Kathy Vitrova.
Kathy Vitrova. So in 3920, it talks about restrictions and prohibitions for short-term rental, like Airbnb, that kind of thing. But then, and this caught my attention earlier too, 3934, it says that you they will occupy one of the dwelling units as their permanent or primary residence, except for bona fide temporary absences. So like, what does that mean?
When people go to Florida for half the year.
Well, so then that, then I wondered, does that open up that Airbnb piece? I don't know. I, I just don't understand what bona fide temporary, I mean, unless they went into a, a, like a nursing home or they had surgery, they went into rehab or they were in a car, something to that effect. But if, if it's that, if they're just going to Florida for the winter. But what happens to that space?
Then it's just a rental.
Certainly one of the things we discussed in the meeting, work, or the work group Kathy helped me with this is that if people rent this as Airbnb, we're not, we have no control over that.
Right.
In terms of a temporary options, I mean, that could be something we put in our definitions.
Except for the fact that there, you have to have notarized statements, right? That.
No, the notarized statement is that the, that there will be an owner in one of the units.
Right.
It's.
Yeah, this is Amy Cluier. I think only because we had an applicant come before us and say, well, we're putting this accessory dwelling on our house because someday we're going to retire there. Right now, we're going to rent out both of them, but it's still our accessory dwelling. Because maybe sometimes we'll live there and we have family, friends who are living there. And when we come back, we, we go and we live there and they go and they stay with other relatives. So it's really our place that they're just babysitting until, you know what I mean? So that was an actual case that, that came to us.
Yes.
So I want, I think that we should be trying to avoid that.
Correct.
So by saying, oh, the snowbirds can do it.
Right.
We're opening ourselves up to a can of beans. Let me mix some more metaphors.
Wormy beans.
We go back to this, except for bona fide temporary absences, like what?
I don't think that should be in there.
I don't even know what that means.
Yeah.
That could be anything. That's a big, huge can of worms.
Right.
Bona fize it.
Well, maybe we need to define it. We may need to define that term.
Yep.
I would like to get rid of it all, but I guess we're not writing a bylaw right now.
Oh, that's good, good discussion for the group too. Interesting. Yeah. Oh, this is helpful.
Yeah, like we, we don't want to give like a back way to have just a rental property.
Right.
Right, right. No, I agree.
Short-term.
Can I, I just want to say one other thing.
Kathy Vitrova?
So the accessible units, 3942, when they talk about reasonable deviation, I think that's a little tricky too. Like what's reasonable? I mean, based on what? We don't, we don't know what those conditions might be. I mean, the planning board will allow reasonable deviation from the stated conditions where necessary to install features that facilitate access and mobility. I don't know, I don't even, what is reasonable deviation?
Well, yeah, and from the stated conditions, which stated conditions? Are we talking just about physical appearance or are we talking about 900 square feet?
Yes, and are we talking about, like, what is it? External deviation? Is it internal deviation? I think it's just that, I think, again, this goes back to an issue, issue of definition, right? How are we defining that?
I'm sorry, keep interrupting me.
That's okay.
Amy Cluier, and is it going to deviate because it's becoming ADA accessible? Or is it going to deviate for some other reason? Like, I don't know. I feel like that should be.
Like what if it was above a garage? And so there's a, there's like a exterior elevator kind of thing because somebody was arthritic and they couldn't walk up the stairs. I mean, so what's the reasonable deviation?
That's a good question for Chris because this was written before I was on the planning board. So I'm not sure what the intent was there.
Okay.
These are the kinds of questions that we'll get. These are the kinds of questions that we'll get under.
I think it's language that doesn't mean anything.
Right. I think it was probably language that was delivered to us from some other body that was like.
Right.
I don't know. I don't know what it means. Anyway, so I think those are.
Any other questions? This is helpful, I think.
I have one more question.
Yes, Anne Marie.
I wonder if, um, container houses specifically came up in conversation. They can be a hot button issue really.
We've talked about, uh, this doesn't have, well, that we can't do tiny houses, but not, we didn't say anything about container houses. What I.
They talk about mobile homes?
No, they're sort of like prefab homes, right? They take shipping containers and people build them out themselves, but you can also have them prefab built out for you. And they come in in a crane and they plop it on your property.
Well, I think they have to meet their special permit regulations, whether it was septic or not, you know, accessibility. That there's some specific wording in here, you know, well, of course, that would be a detached unit.
Right. Um, I was just wondering if they came up specifically.
No, 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 we didn't talk about that. But if it's detached, then it goes as a special permit and we have to address. And then it's whether or not it's an issue of, I don't know. Yeah. So the whole issue of container homes can be something for us to look at. Sure.
Some people have strong feelings about things.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing here.
Well, and I think that they, if I just, okay, so that is a way.
Oh, tell us how you feel.
That is a way to create affordable housing on small lots that we want to fill in. Like it, all of the things that we have been talking about, using these smaller lots in the middle of town. And also having, um, you know, smaller setbacks for, um, some proposed projects. But also this is a way that you can create a dwelling that doesn't cost three hundred thousand dollars. You know, you can get them for forty thousand dollars. You can get empty ones for much cheaper. You can get them for six thousand dollars and build it out yourself. So, you know, this might, whatever, I'm not saying it's going to solve our problems, but if somebody came along and wanted to do it, it would be an easy way to make something affordable.
Okay, cool.
It's my two cents. I like them.
No.
I think they're affordable. Good.
And they most likely will be brought up at some point, so let's bring it up now and try to address it. Anybody else?
Nope. This is Kathy. I have one more thing.
Yes.
I think the other piece and it's separate, but related to these ADUs is how do we incentivize people who have current in-law apartments to come forward to say they have them? Right? So we have a sense of what our inventory is.
Can we give them no fees if it's already existing? Like, can we say, bring your plans to us and we're not going to charge you for, you know, we're not going to give you that initial.
I mean, I think the other piece too is so, if so, we enact this and we say, this is what our bylaws are related to accessory dwelling units. And if anybody happens to have one, um, and you are not in compliance with this and something should happen on your property, your insurance may not cover, um, any damages that are done if there isn't quote unquote in-law apartment that is there illegally.
Yeah, this is one of the things we kind of talked about was the whole issue of monitoring. And, um, Carolyn was quite concerned as she's been at other meetings too, in terms of Board of Health, not really having the bandwidth to be able to be monitoring other than potentially on a complaint basis. But we're not doing like some, some towns that suggest with some of these, certainly with the, um, the short-term rentals, that there are annual Board of Health inspections and, you know, we're not planning on doing that with this. So I guess the question kind of would be, why do we want to have an inventory other than?
Well, if we were looking at how are we gauging our numbers for affordable housing, right? And so say it's in somebody's house that they've been living in forever and, 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 um, they move into this in-law apartment and their children move in, that becomes an affordable housing piece of property.
Yeah.
Because they can stay in their home. It's actually becomes two affordable pieces of property, right? For the family that's moving back in and the person who originally lived there who has the in-law apartment, right? So how are we, how are we, how are we knowing who's living in our town? How are we complying with, um, our own bylaws? And, and how do we, um, look at our numbers for affordable housing?
I think we, we don't know.
Yeah. Start thinking.
This is Amy Cluier again. And I mean, I think that this keeps coming back as an issue, right? That we don't have any enforcement. Well, I, I guess instead of writing our bylaws around like, oh geez, we don't have enforcement. Maybe the town should think about how to enforce things because it's impacting our ability to write bylaws.
True. But that takes.
Ultimately, we want to know our, I, I believe it's the town, we want to know what our housing inventory is. And so basically you're also saying, how do we incentivize people who maybe even doing this on the side to be able to come forward and say, yeah.
Without fear. I mean, I think the other piece is, you know, property tax. So if you have an in-law apartment that nobody knows about and it's, it's on record that it's a three-bedroom house, when really it's a three-bedroom house and this in-law apartment, that would increase the property tax. And so that might be something that's a concern, I would think. Maybe it would if it changes the square footage.
Well, if it doesn't change, it changed the square footage, you know, if they've just changed the attic or the basement, they made the basement into an accessory apartment.
Maybe, right. Then no, I guess it maybe it would.
It's, well, it could change the assessed value. I would think that, yes. So from that standpoint, it would increase taxes.
Yes.
Oh, so that's not, that's an incentive not to.
That's an incentive not to. So, so that's the question. Like, how do we shift that to an incentive to open up our understanding of who's in our community, where are people living for a variety of reasons? I mean, I don't think we're in a town, it's not that big, where there's just tons of these in-law apartments anywhere, right? But I do think understanding our inventory and, and, um, making it so that people want to come forward and not hide back is, like, how friendly can we make it? I guess is what it is.
Chris did a, uh, survey of five or six neighboring towns. And in general, they have, what Kathy, two to three apartments a year, maybe?
Yeah, it's not many.
Yeah, very few.
Minimal. Okay.
And by the way, Jen Gannett got back to me and from how, what she can tell is we have thirty affordable units in our town, which she admits is probably not accurate, but she doesn't know how to really get a handle on all that information. Because if you remember at our last meeting, I think she spoke of all the different housing authorities that could have a hand in providing affordable housing in our town. And she doesn't know how to get all that information from those different entities. So thirty is not enough. We know that. So even if sixty is still not enough, you need a couple hundred or so.
Right. As a, uh, we'll close this discussion and then I'll, um, give a little bit more on that one. But do you have any other suggestions for the work group?
Well, I think Kathy, this just popped into my head. I'm sorry. This is Kathy with trouble. Um, so we were talking about when we sent out the census. I mean, my dog is on our census, right? Every year. So they all know that I have a dog on Eighteenth Street along with every other dog. But, but somebody had made a suggestion on our board, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who it was, about asking on that census, is there an accessory unit within the home? Could that be a checkbox? I mean, they know what my occupation is and that I have a dog and how many people live in my house. Like, could we just ask a question, is there an accessory unit on this property? I mean, they could easily check no, right? But at least we've asked the question, seeking the inventory. So it gives us some leverage to say, well, this, you know.
Sounds like another work group for the census. What else should be?
Yep.
Could be asking, because all that people, other people would want to know other information as well.
That's very true.
Yeah, actually Kathy too, it seems like there've been a number of these questions that might go to the assessors or that we should have an assessor on the committee, but. See, okay. Well, or to ask them at this point, we've already, we're probably only going to have two or three meetings at the most, so. Huh, okay, good. Yeah, I mean, yeah, good point. Okay. Thank you, Kathy. So to be continued, um, at our July meeting, Kathy will give a report on the next meeting. In relation to the Department of Housing and Community Development, um, Jen, as Kathy mentioned, did do a fair amount of research to try to pin down what are our numbers of affordable houses here in Deerfield. Yes, I think she did say that she found around thirty. I was able to actually get an answer today from, um, DCHD, the HCD, whatever, um, that, um, they believe we have twenty-one. So we do have a few more to report back. We were supposed, the, the, the letter from the state came to, uh, the Town Administrator Select Board, Zoning Board and Planning Board. And, um, the select board asked Jen to respond. She began by spending quite a bit of effort, I think, looking into the number of units. But then did not get the letter written out yet. So I've offered to, um, draft the letter and then have select board, Casey, whomever, take a look at it. My, certainly my desire overall is that even though we want to sort of get the heat off us if we can, that we want to be genuine in recognizing that we have a responsibility to increase our housing in Deerfield and that we are working on that in a variety of ways.
And this is Andrea and I assume be aware that this is an issue everywhere. It is not, it is not unique to, to Deerfield.
You know, number, yeah, I don't know what the percentage is, but a lot of towns certainly look at it very closely.
I just thought about something if you might make a comment. This woman that I know, um, from when I worked up in Vermont actually has written, written a book, it's more than a manual on shared housing, and she's been working on that for years. And, you know, it's just this, you know, certain situation, we may have, you know, a widow who's living in one of the big old houses here in Deerfield, who doesn't want to leave their home, but really can't afford it, you know, the taxes and just the upkeep. And so there is certainly a potential of someone being able to move in, could be grad student from UMass, could be, could even be a young family and, you know, in turn, moving in, they could mow the lawn, they could do some, whatever, whatever it is, whatever is decided. And, you know, they should have a contract.
So basically a roommate situation.
Yeah, sort of a roommate. Um, and so that's something that I, I think I had mentioned to Lili at one point. You know, it's not really senior, but it could be senior housing, shared housing. So I could, um, check in with her, get back in touch with her and see if she would be willing to come and speak. But what would the appropriate group be for her to speak to? Would that be to do a presentation before the planning board? Would it be for senior housing? And so, you know, you don't have to give an answer now, but just think about that and then I'd be happy to get in touch with her.
Cool. Okay.
Cause I mean, that could be.
Are you talking about shared housing as affordable housing?
Um, yeah. Yeah.
I got confused for a second.
Yeah, it's, it's a win-win situation for a lot of people. It's not, not for everyone, but it does work for some share. So.
Boost our numbers.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so good discussion. So next on our agenda is our planner. I believe that's next, isn't it? Yes. So Denise, Jen, Casey and I had a Zoom conversation with Ken Comina, is that how you pronounce his name? I think it's Comina, Comina, um, from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Um, and then subsequent to that, um, Jen did have a few more conversations with, um, Furcog, um, as you remember the background of this being that, um, we were able to go to PVPC, which Deerfield is not in their catchment area. But the reason we were able to really, um, access their services is because Furcog, who does cover Deerfield, does not have planning services available for us. And, um, so subsequent to our conversation with, um, PVPC, Jen did get a little bit more information from Furcog and it sounds like in relation to actually some services that potentially are already covered by the fees that we, that we pay to Furcog. I'm a little uncertain about that, but it sounded like it.
Looking at the email from Casey, you got this too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's very exciting. So, um, I did send out, uh, or I passed out here and, um, Kathy here, I, I don't know, I don't even know if I sent it. Here we go, share screen, right on my share screen.
You sent it in a like.
Oh, did I? Yeah. Okay, here we go.
Excel.
Excel, here we go. Um, and we will zoom big. For all of us, not just. So, um, the process being, oopsie, that, um, I guess we'll put bigger than we need. That, um, we are going to be developing a contract of services for, um, PVPC. And also, um, attached to that contract will be a scope of services, which in general discusses what we expect the, can the planner to do. And, um, where we began with all of this was really all the conversations that we in the planning board have been having for quite a while about initiatives that we want to take. So, um, so, uh, this first page here, uh, talks about, uh, potential services that Ken could offer. You know, as we very broadly speculate how much time it would take, we came up with a hundred and seventeen hours and we're only contracting for a hundred. So there you go. Um.
May I ask where some things are in there?
Oh, it was just to try to help you see that it's like underlining. Certainly wanting to make sure that we, um, that the planner helps, um, us determine if there are other free programs that could do work instead of Ken doing it. Um, and we also want to be able to, um, hopefully start to compile data, especially on money brought in or expenses saved, um, by having a planner. And I think Casey said she does have some templates for that from some other town. Drafting decisions did seem to be one thing for sure that Furcog mentioned that they would not be able to assist us with. So, um, uh, that is, um, something that, um, would be wonderful and also have tried to develop a template for us so that, um, on a regular basis, we don't have to be reinventing the wheel. This ties in updating the application processes ties back to what Andrea was talking about earlier. And, um, Alex brought us the application that doesn't have up-to-date fee schedule in it right now. So, um, that may be rolling off a log and it may be quite a challenging, um, challenging, uh, piece. But, um, certainly as I was talking to other towns, uh, having user-friendly application seems to be one of the most compelling things for developers. So let's make sure it's easy. How can we increase our housing inventory? That certainly has been what we've been talking about tonight. And, you know, many different ways to do it. And this would be one of the things we replied to C HD that we are looking at. This forty R piece is, um, that there are, as, as Denise was saying, there are some new, um, pieces of legislation in Massachusetts that. To encourage basically dense. Centerish, center urbanish, center dense housing. Um, and then there's a related forty R to increase housing inventory. And related forty S that there could be some state reimbursement to pay if in fact. Additional school costs are incurred because more families are there with schoolchildren. I'll say as an aside with my work on the Senior Housing Committee that. There's a little bit of tension about having dense housing, you know, how much you want to sort of be stuck in a. Development that, and especially stashed away somewhere.
I guess I'm just a little confused looking at this, so are you talking about, okay, you're talking about triage as possible to PVC? Okay, so what you're defining here, you're talking about PVPC doing or Furcog?
No, this would be, this would be attached to the contract for Ken with our contract with PVPC for Ken. And this would essentially, I mean, it's not really a job description, but basically it's our expectations of what he will be doing with us over the next year.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot.
Is this possible to to look at these and prioritize and do we need to attach? Hours next, I I find that.
Well, that's where we speculated hours here, and to some degree, they have been prioritized through the conversation with you and Denise.
I just didn't realize that we were actually gonna put hours down.
Oh, I don't think we will in terms of the um contract, no, but just as a conversation point for tonight.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, okay, it's just, I was looking at the email that that Casey sent after her conversation with Linda Dunlavy. And it seems like the Furcog is gonna be able to do a lot more and that we were just gonna look at to Ken to do the applications first, but.
Right, well, that's where on page two, subsequent to the meeting that I attended with you. I've kind of put down what would potentially be happening with Furcog. They mentioned that they might be able to work with us on some bone zoning by law changes, but they were saying that they anticipated that for annual town meeting, so that's really. For a year from now. That they also, this is, and this is cool, that they might be able to assist us with figuring out how to move forward with our master plan initially. We were thinking that might be something that Ken could do. And also that they might even be able to help us with bundling grants and writing some grants. But that we would want to bundle together some different um projects in those grants. And then there was the question about, you know, looking again at our tourism overlay by law. So. So. Well, first of all, this, well, we will end up with a. We might even call it a draft scope of services on the contract, I'm not certain how that works. But Ken is planning on coming to our planning board meeting in July. So he'll meet us, we'll have a chance to sort of talk with him. He can. You know, we may have the contract in place by then, it may be just moments away from being in place, so if we feel like. At that point, that's just more prioritization that can happen at that meeting, does that? Seem like a good next step, I guess in the meantime, as you look at, oh, we see some notes from Andrea. As you look at these potential. Responsibilities, if there's something else that you'd like to see addressed or or considered, if you could. Send that to me.
Grant writing, grant writing, grant writer.
Yeah, Denise, you remember, I mean, he he's a planner, he assists some, but it's not really his. I think he more so becomes aware of grant opportunities. Um, and then it may be that actually from what we're seeing from Furcog, is that Furcog potentially could help us with writing some grants?
Yeah, well, they already did, I mean, they did, they did as a matter of fact. We did get the grant funding for a shared streets and spaces, which is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and that will cover. The crosswalks going across from Frontier, two different ones, then across from the park, and then also flashing beacons. So it'll slow traffic down, be a lot safer, and then at some point, I think, we do have in our. Budget, I think, for sidewalks, to then do the sidewalk that goes from Frontier to the park. So, I mean, you know, Furcog is a, and they were able to do that to no cost, no cost for us, and then we use another group. That was funded through, I think, the Bar Foundation, so.
I think it's interesting that. I mean, my understanding is that certainly Casey's quite connected with Furcog, that talks with them all the time, we've talked with them many times. They've known that we need assistance, but to some degree, only upon hearing that. We're going to PVPC, have they kind of gotten the, you know, been, you know?
I think Casey said that they, they're planning on hiring a planner, but in the conversation. I don't, I don't know what the process is, I don't know if they've put it out there yet, and I just know personally from hiring people, it takes a long time. And then to train people, so it could be, it could be a year.
But suddenly, we seem to be higher on their list.
Yeah, which is good.
Yeah.
Which is very good. But they've been good to work with, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know a lot, I mean, certainly I've been so impressed with the Whistle of Rose. Well, so again, I guess um for all of you. If you can either forward to me your notes or your questions or um keep in. We'll try to, I'll try to keep you informed. Between now and our July meeting. It may be with various vacations and whatnot that it, that we'll just be finalizing the contract then, but that's okay.
Yeah, and just just another suggestion, doing the contract, you know, I mean, we only have X amount of hours, like you said, we've got a hundred hours. And so, you know, I would think it might be helpful for everyone to look through and prioritize, what are the three top priorities? And then when we write into this contract, that we will have certain points along the way that we'll have that conversation to see where he has. Where he is in the process, and we can also, I mean, some things are more important than others as far as I'm concerned, concerned. And then we can, we can reallocate funds to that, make a change so that it's not set in stone, I'd like it to be a little more flexible.
Yeah, we won't have, I mean, again, I think the hours will be off, there will be no, yeah, not, yeah. Or taking him off of one thing, saying, okay, enough with the applications, let's go write some decisions or something like that, yeah, right, cool. All right. On that one, alrighty. So now the, maybe the hardest part of our whole agenda. We did last year and want to, again, this year, have a training session, Jen, I know, has been collecting. And actually even copying things to upgrade our manuals, I have a lot of things that is Denise, so.
And I apologize because I think you may have asked me to talk to Jen about, or maybe you had about. Doing a training session, and when is the best time to do a training session?
Well, yeah, so I think um probably then, which is the carton, which is the horse. If we are able to say, and before, I think we had, it was a morning, wasn't it, we were?
Well, we should, we better think about summertime vacations, I know Aunt Mary's planning a great vacation.
But she has in the past sent us out little um surveys, right, where she'll propose several different times and we all, yeah, yeah.
So uh see what time she has available, in general, though, is are there certain days that just never will work or? Yeah, Kathy, yes.
Well, my schedule is. Right now, I work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and August it's gonna change, so it'll be more variable, so. Yeah, there's, and I can't tell you what days will or won't work if we're going that far out.
Okay, so the question then would be if. Denise, if you can talk with hers to, or I can just send her an email and ask her, Jen, to propose. It's almost like a survey monkey.
Cat is going crazy.
That'll be fun. She's sky falling, Kathy?
She's chasing a moth, she's all over the place.
Don't let her land on your face like my cat did.
Okay, so we'll do a survey monkey for that. Oh, we did get a, last night, this is sort of, although I say hold on, Amber Gardens, but then I would be under. Business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours, um we did get a brief um letter, which is just fine from Amber Gardens. Basically, their update is that they have some. They have submitted their license applications to the Cannabis Control Commission for cultivation and manufacturing. There was a first review of these applications and the CCC requested six additional pieces of information. Which were provided and now it's being reviewed, and in the meantime, there is due diligence, especially with EverSource. That is uh happening in term and should be completed in June, so. I guess the bottom line with that is that they, and of course, they're not starting any. Construction or anything until all of that is finalized, so trying to keep on top of that. Public comment. Mister Public, no. All right, uh, any committees or seminars, I realize I need to keep track of when I do my seminars. Certainly had our committee reports today, but.
There's an open space committee meeting tomorrow, which I found out about today.
Well, enjoy. Yeah, I don't think any reports otherwise, I mean.
I can report that, on the grant writer that we worked with for CCI, Alice, um just submitted. The application for the community one stop, and that was submitted, I don't know, last week, so.
And it was for?
That is for doing architectural drawings and engineer, you know, planner for the. Turning the former grammar school senior center into the municipal building and then adding on a. Senior house, senior community center, okay, and if we get the full amount, it would be four hundred thousand dollars. And we could potentially, the application was a little confusing, we may have access to some other funds as well. But that wasn't as specific, so I, we're not gonna hear about that, I don't think, until October, unfortunately, takes a long time. But that's done.
Any other reports or seminars? I don't believe we had any mail, and um, whoops, well, our next meeting still is uh the eleventh, although it's not the public hearing.
May I ask, who, who should I talk to about scheduling? Public hearing if.
If Sue's not here.
Sue's not here, Jen's not here, and Casey's not here.
When, public hearing for what and when?
Canceling the one.
Well, for for canceling the one and and establishing the August date for the, I'm sorry? So, so the posting of the public hearing for August, that's what we're really, so we probably have time for that, and those need to be published.
Two, two weeks in advance.
Two full weeks in advance?
Yeah, Alex, I think you're right, I don't think that was because I spoke with Casey today and she did mention, oh, if you're gonna do that, you know, let's. I said we will be talking about that tonight.
Right, so the fact that, I mean, maybe what we can do is just.
Well, I can, I will, given that it's not until August, I will send the email to Jen. And they will, she'll act on when she returns.
But also in terms of making sure that there's nothing sent in for July, Sue Berlott is still here this week. So that's important because we want to pay for a public hearing posting that we're not going to do, if they still think that it's on for July.
Okay, so cancel the.
Cancel. Right, good question.
If it was even done, I'm not sure whether it was.
No, I don't, yeah, but. Oh, well then.
So I should talk to you?
Okay. Okay. All right, anything else miscellaneous?
No, you know, but you know what, we should have, Alex, you should have come to the mics, so for the for the purposes of the minutes, can you just come to the mic and just say that? Thanks.
Okay, so my name's Alex Hershenreider, um so as you guys all know, Sue is leaving us unfortunately. Like Friday is her last day, so I will be filling in, I've been training with her since last Thursday. So hopefully, I will be sticking around for a week or two weeks or something like that until they figure out a new person.
Can you spell your last name?
Yep, H E R C H E N R E D E R. And at the moment. Email, important emails, like related postings and things like that are going to me from Jen. So, yeah.
You're what? A hershenreder@deerfield.m a.
No, it's, um, if you send her an email, you get my, it'll have the. Do the automatic response, but um, yeah, I don't want to give it out.
Okay, all right.
Email her and you'll get it.
Okay.
And like I said, I'll be here all week with Sue, so.
Good, thank you. All right, if there's no other business, can we have a motion to? All right, discussion, and let's see, Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy with trouble, yes.
Emily Wolfco, yes, sub meeting is adjourned, thank you all.